Anyway, I'm Alyssa Magdemara. On behalf of East Greenwich News, the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce, welcome to this candidate tour. Steve Lombardi from the Chamber was not going to be here, but he wishes. He said, "Best of luck with our candidates." And we thank New England Tech for letting us use this space. And for letting us, Lucas and I can't stop him. And you know, the tech student right back there is smiling at the way I pronounce his name. He's videotaping this for us, and that's going to be available in a variety of outlets. And we will let you know that. So be on the lookout, share that with people who weren't able to be here. Thanks also to East Greenwich Pendulum. Gabby, Saletta, and I worked on the questions that you all contributed. Thank you for contributing those questions. And to Phil Cozalina, who is giving our timing tonight, Gabby's colleague. Tonight's moderator, David Preston, grew up in Lewis and lives now in East Greenwich with his wife, Jen. Both of their children have gone through East Greenwich Public Schools. A Marine Corps veteran, David is the founder and owner of New Harbor Group in Providence, and has over 25 years of experience in public policy, communications, and journalism, including serving as Governor Suddenland's Communications Director. David is a member of the Rhode Island Board and is involved in a number of volunteer activities. And here he is.
We're coming this evening. I also want to thank the candidates for being here. Public service is increasingly complex and difficult as the years go on. And it takes a great deal of time and effort to do all the reading and understand all the issues. And if you're doing it right, as I said early on, you're quite often telling your friends and neighbors things that they don't want to hear and casting votes that they don't agree with, which can be unpleasant as well. So I appreciate everyone running for office and serving the public right. We've got two elections here for the price of one ticket. So at the far end of the table, we've got Lori and Aaron, who are running to complete the last two years of a four-year term. So the person who served has resigned. There's two years left on that term. They are running to serve the last two years of that seat. Stuart, Carolyn, and Jeff, and Matt are running for three four-year seats. So there's four people for three seats on this end of the table, two people for one seat, kind of like musical chairs at the far end. So the format tonight is going to be, I'm hoping I can keep track of it. The format tonight for the school committee will be, we will start out with two minutes of an opening statement. The next round will be, each candidate will spend two minutes answering the same question. The third round will be, each individual candidate will answer an individual question that I pull out of the big fishbowl. The other candidates who are not responding to that question, they'll have three chances in the course of the evening to weigh in if it's a point that they think really needs to be made or they really feel strong enough. The fourth and final round will be closing statements by each of the candidates, and those will be 90 seconds each. So we can help each other keep track of the format as we move on. So what I'd like to do first is to start off with the opening statements. And the first one up is Stuart Peterson.
Stand or sit?
You can stand behind the chair or you can sit.
Good evening, first of all. I'm Stuart Peterson. I'm a father of three kids in the East Greenwich School District, a third grader, a second grader, and a kindergarten. I'm a portfolio manager and a financial advisor at Jamie Montgomery Scott. I moved here four years ago from Chicago, and I'm originally from Iowa. For the last eight months, I've been working alongside Carolyn, Matt, Mary Ellen, John, and Mike as a current East Greenwich School Committee member. And being on the school committee is, it's been an extension of what I do for a living. Within our wealth management group, we plan, we manage, we provide counsel and advice. We often ask our clients, "What is it that we do that they value the most?" And I wrote a couple of the answers down. Listening and understanding their family, depth of industry knowledge, overseeing their finances, creating and executing a financial plan, meeting expectations, protecting investments, using current technology, and being a problem solver. I think that a lot of these reasons are the same reasons that the town council appointed me in March to be a school committee member. I take great pride in my work. I take great pride in being a good dad. And I take pride in my job as a school committee member. Sorry.
Thank you to the organizers of tonight's forum and to all of you for being here on this beautiful night. My name is Carolyn Markin. It's been an honor to serve as a member of the East Greenwich School Committee since 2012 and as Chair of the School Committee since 2014. I moved to East Greenwich in 2003 with my husband, Ole Stone, just before our first child was about to start kindergarten. Our son Ben is now a freshman at Northwestern. And our daughter Taya is a sophomore at the high school. I'm running here because I love our schools and I want to support them and continue to improve them. But my involvement in the schools began long before I became a member of the school committee. When my children were in elementary school, I served as a character county ambassador. I co-chaired a PTG-sponsored capital campaign to rebuild the playground at Meadowbrook. And I was a founding board member of the East Greenwich Education Foundation. For much of my professional life, I have worked in economic and workforce development and as an advocate on policy issues impacting women and families. I have always had a commitment to stakeholder engagement and consensus building and have brought that commitment with me to my work on the school committee. Since becoming Chair, I believe that I have created a welcoming atmosphere of school committees, communication, and engaged stakeholders. When I took over as Chair in 2014, I inherited a stalled strategic planning process where there was not only a lack of agreement on the potential elements of the strategic plan, but on the strategic planning process itself. In six months, I facilitated a collaborative process that resulted in the creation of our vision 2020. In this plan, we crafted five strategic priorities. First, accelerate the development, adoption, and implementation of great curriculum. Second, maximize learning gains for every student. Third, get and keep great staff. Fourth, advance research and form strategies to ensure the physical and mental leading of our students. And finally, maximize our resources. We are five years into a strategic plan, and what I'm most excited about in terms of continuing to serve is being able to help make our collective vision a reality. I'd be grateful for your support on the number eight.
I'm going to go with standing. My name is Jeff Ratler, I'm running for school committee. You guys know. I grew up in East Greenwich. I graduated from East Greenwich High School a little bit earlier than these other gentlemen over here. I have two girls in the schools right now, one at Cole, one at Meadowbrook, where I went to elementary school. My wife is a speech language pathologist in Cumberland Schools, so actually have a little familiarity with multiple districts in the state. My background is business. I've run businesses for large and small companies my entire life, been a buyer for these companies in a variety of different industries. I owned my own educational toy store for six years and closed a few years ago, so I have experience as a private business owner. And right now, I work with a private equity firm where I manage the portfolio companies we own. I help work on their strategy, their financial reporting, their cash management, and their budgets, which is a big focus in what I do every single day. So given the opportunity to serve you guys and be on the school committee, I want to bring that experience and help out. Not about politics, I'm about bringing what's best for our kids to the schools. All of the decisions I make will be based on what's best for the kids, not what's best for the parents, not what's convenient, but what's going to educate our children the best. So we need to work on our budget process. We do one-year budgeting right now. We need to do a minimum of three to five-year budgeting. It's going to be a better strategic plan. It's going to help the taxpayers, it's going to help us manage our reserve accounts. There's a lot going on, and by doing one year at a time, we don't know what's coming. I want to make sure we have an education that serves all of our different types of learners. High achievers need to have good opportunities and pool enrollment, expand upon what we do now, more AP classes. Those that struggle, we need the personnel and the guidance to help make sure that they don't slip through the cracks. We need a robust special ed program. We need to make sure to use the data we have to make sure that program's teaching the kids as they need to. We also need to have a good opportunity to create, like we're doing in tech, those who want to get into that. I'm also really big on health and wellness. It's not just about test scores. It's about the physical and mental health of our kids. So I thank you and I hope for your vote on November 8th.
We're going to alternate, stand, sit, stand, sit. If that's okay with everybody. Good evening. My name is Matt Plane, and I'm running for reelection to the school committee. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to serve East Greenwich. I grew up in town and attended the schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. My experiences were so positive, I became a teacher myself. I taught middle school for four years. Along the way, I coached three sports and obtained a master's degree in education. From there, I attended law school, passed the bar in three states, and built the law practice, serving schools, including some of the most innovative programs in the region. I also teach education reform and policy to undergraduate education majors. My experiences with schools has taught me that the best schools don't just teach academics, they build community, they teach students to serve, and they afford all students equitable access to high-quality education programs. East Greenwich can continue to do this. We must emphasize our core values of community building and community engagement. Utilize the vast unit capital resources available among this constituency. Support programs endeavoring to include our students in the community. Build upon the district's communication strategies to generate interest and involvement from the community at large and the business and operations of our schools. Elect leaders committed to these values and experienced in public school education. Growing up in this town and attending these schools has been one of the greatest blessings in my life and a benefit my wife and I will now afford to our children. I'm indebted to this community and motivated to continue to serve it. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address me. It's an honor to serve you and I'd be honored to earn your vote on November 8th.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you to David and the organizers of the event. My name is Lori McEwen, and I'm running for school committee. My husband Brian and I moved to East Greenwich in 2008 with our children, Michael and Taryn, when they were going into second grade or first grade. Michael is now a sophomore and Taryn is a freshman at the high school. We've been very happy with our life here, and that's why I'm looking to serve you and the community. My background is as an educator. I've spent 25 years in education. I've worked as a teacher, as a building leader, as a district leader, as a researcher, and a consultant. I hold master's degrees and bachelor's degrees in education and a PhD from Boston College in Education Administration. Most recently, I was the chief of instruction, leadership, and equity for the Providence Public School Department, overseeing 24,000 students, the majority of whom live in poverty. In that role, which is the role of the chief academic officer, special education, English language learners, data research and accountability, curriculum and instruction, professional development and performance management, were all under my purview. In that role, I oversaw a $35 million federal budget and contributed to the development of a $666 million budget for the district. In short, I know teaching and learning. I know what makes schools great. I understand what teachers want and need to be effective, and I know what kids need. And what kids need in our district is an effective and written curriculum. To quote the DAS report from 2011 for the high school, which I think speaks to both the high school and the district, "East Greenwich is a very good school," they said. I think it speaks for the district. A very good district that could be a superb district. We are poised to be superb. We are poised to be excellent. We can do that with a laser focus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment. That's my wheelhouse. That's my understanding. I've created innovative schools in Providence and for a charter school network in Northern Rhode Island. This has been my life's work, and I look forward to contributing here now to serve you for our children and my children. I hope for your vote on that.
Good evening. Thank you for being here and thanks for our hosts. My name's Aaron McCann. I'm a proud parent of three daughters of ten. Frenchtown and Cole Middle School. My wife's a professor at Johnson &amp; Wales. I grew up in East Greenwich and graduated from the high school in 1994, and I think I was the only student who was the band president and captain of the basketball team. I'm running for the school committee because I'm indebted to this community. I believe I can add value from my experience working in both the private and public sector. As way of background, I'm currently the branch sales manager at Bank Newport in town. Previous to banking, I was assistant to the governor for two terms. I was an elementary music teacher for two years in North Kingstown, and I sang professionally on tour in the South and in Italy. I have a master's in music with a concentration in vocal performance. I'm just finishing up my MBA, and I'm still certified in the state of Rhode Island, although I don't currently do that. Finally, I was the chairman of the War Store Authority and took the responsibility overseeing a $300 million asset with my fellow board members for about a decade. In regards to my platform, I strongly believe we need a director of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. This will improve the community because that person will provide leadership and a vision for ongoing planning and implementation of the district's curriculum instructional services. Furthermore, the director will ensure that the district's education and special education objectives are aligned to state frameworks. Thank you for listening to me. I'm very grateful to be here and very humbled and honored to be with such great people. So thank you.
We'll start with the second round, and we'll start with Carolyn. And in this round, we'll have a general question that each candidate will answer. So Carolyn, let's go first. And the question is, what is the biggest challenge facing the school district today? And I would choose rest.
So we do have multiple challenges for this, so I'll have to just pick one. And I think I'm going to go back on what others have already mentioned, which is a wicked challenge, which is our lack of a good director. And I just wanted to give a little bit of background here about where we are with curriculum development in the district. When I joined the school committee in 2012, the district administration was attempting to use what you could call a distinctive leadership model, where building principals essentially were acting like the instructional leaders in the district. And they were working with a part-time curriculum coordinator who would help to coordinate curriculum between the schools. As I understand it, the reason why the district was employing this approach is because they were reluctant to take limited financial resources out of the classroom or out of the schools and put it into what we perceive as overhead in the central office. And so, and people might remember a few years ago, that the things that were on the plate at the time were moving the high school to one-to-one technology for all students, the district was struggling to fund its capital maintenance budget, and we were beginning to contemplate the move to all-day kindergarten. However, when we engaged in the strategic planning process last year, there was virtually universal consensus that demand for curriculum development in the district was really outstripping the resources that we had to do. That the only way we would be able to succeed in accelerating the pace of curriculum development would be to hire a good director. I think in most people's minds, that's absolutely what is next on the list for the district to accomplish.
Thanks, Carolyn. Jeff, the district's biggest challenge in your approach yourself?
The biggest challenge in our district is the budgets. Everything comes down from the budget. We don't have our budgets the way they need to be. We can't get all of the other things we need in place. I have the financial and operational experience to fix this as best as we can because it's a challenge across the board. It's a challenge for every town. We need long-term planning in our budgets. We do one-year plans. When we sign contracts, we do impact statements that say this town, what it's going to cost. We have no idea what we're bringing in. We have no idea what everything else is going to cost down the road. One year at a time, do not get the job done. It makes it much harder on the taxpayers. It makes us eat up our reserve accounts without knowing what's going to happen down the road. And it makes it more challenging to execute our strategies. I do budgets every single day. We need to go three to five years at a minimum to make sure that we can figure out what's going on, and that will help us plan for the town as well. We also need to look into creating revenue streams that will help our budgets. I have the experience to do that. I've created revenue streams everywhere I've been, and they don't exist. We figure schools don't have much of a place for revenue streams. We have some opportunities we've got to take advantage of. That will also help lessen the taxpayer burden and will improve how we budget going forward and our local revenue.
What's the biggest challenge in your approach?
I'm going to agree partially with what Carolyn and what Jeff said. Our budget is obviously an extreme challenge, given that 93% of the per pupil cost of educating our children in our district comes from the locality, comes from East Greenwich, and only 7% of that comes from state aid. So how can we continue to offer a high-quality education program to all of our students and still keep this community affordable? I grew up on Phillips Road, the youngest child with a single mother who worked at Meadowbrook, and then in the special ed department, and then at Stanley Bostich as the secretary. She could afford to raise her children here, and we had a great upbringing, and we were not without access to great education. If we continue along this trajectory, we're going to make East Greenwich out of reach for working families. So how do we offer a high-quality education program when most of the money, an overwhelming majority of the money we have comes from taxes? Jeff had indicated that we need to look to revenue, additional revenue sources. We frequently think about cutting expenses, but an overwhelming majority of the expenses in the budget are things that are fixed that we must spend on, like salaries, like benefits, like professional services. We need to have those, and so it's unlikely we're going to make a major dent in our budget. So how do we increase revenue streams? We can explore adding career and technical education programs that will give our students real-world skills, and we would be eligible for federal Perkins奖 scholarships. We would also be eligible to receive students from other districts, and the sending district would pay a portion of the costs associated with education in this district.
So I could echo a lot of that. I think what I'll focus on, though, is vision and clarity. You know, if you don't know where you're going, anywhere you end up is fine. There are four questions that great schools and districts ask. What is it that we want all children to know and be able to do? How will we know when they've learned it? What will we do when they struggle? And what will we do when they already know it or they're mastering early? That's a question that we need to face in our clear curriculum. As I've researched, we don't have clarity in our curriculum documents. We haven't been clear about what it is that we want all kids to know and be able to do or how we know if they've learned it. We had 89% of our students at the high school level take the PARC assessment. That means one out of 10 did not. That's not acceptable when we clarify what it is that we want all kids to know and be able to do are the standards that we put in front of them, and then we don't have a measure of it. So vision and clarity about where we want our kids to be and how we want them to get there, I think, is essential for us. Then everything else falls into place. How we hire people, that is a lot to what it is that we want kids to know and be able to do. I think there are ways that we can look at curriculum direction in our district in terms of the leadership that we already have and all of our leadership, the instructional leaders. But every leader in the district should be able to answer those questions, and we should all, as a community, know exactly what is expected of our kids and how we will know if they've been successful.
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, you have four people answering this question, so I'm not going to be very, at some point. But what I said about director of curriculum, you know, there's priorities and budgets. If you create one full-time employee, you have to obviously find some answers in the other parts of the budget. But I think this should be a priority because I believe it will streamline what kind of the aforementioned reasons that people brought up. I think, second, I think we got to get back to basics. And when I was the chairman, I was in the governor's office. Sometimes I'd see people trying to implement too many, excuse me, too many strategies. They didn't know about the execution and implementation. So, you know, obviously, we had an all-day kindergarten initiative, which I thought was enough for this year, and then they added the start times of the school being later. And my daughters, who are kindergarten, second grade, really bore the brunt of it because they were on bus nine. And my kindergarten, honestly, was peeing in the pants. They were on too long. It was too early. It was too late. And this isn't to pile on the school committee. I think it was just, rather than just concentrating on one thing and try to do a piece, everybody and do everything at once. And I think that because of my experience in the necessary with the governor's office and as a chairman of the War Store Authority, and making mistakes myself, I noticed you've got to slow things down. You can't do the play every month. You just kind of say, "Okay, let's wait. Let's try to do, what are we going to do?" The state said we have to do the kindergarten, let's start with that, and then maybe next year, go with the later school. Which I'm supportive of.
It's twofold. So I was asked to be the chair of the finance committee five months ago. And when you look under the hood, there are some very frustrating things that we have no control over. Matt touched on it. Local people have touched on fixed expenses, fixed costs. There's, when you look at the retirement system in the state of Rhode Island, the normal cost is 8%. It is now up to 35.49% of payroll is going towards the state of Rhode Island pension. The bulk of that expense has been trickled down to the local level, the town level, not the state, local. So when you talk, I think everyone is in agreeance that we need a director of teaching and learning. I think we're the only district of over 2,000 students that does not have that. We run very lean as a district. We do not even have an assistant superintendent, which I believe Narragansett is the only other school that doesn't have that. I started to work with our state representative, Antonio Russo, who's on the finance committee for the state of Rhode Island. The funding formula is another issue that Matt had touched on. We receive $1,145 per student per year in state aid. The average is 6,000. If we just received the average state aid per student, that's an extra $11.4 million a year in our budget. 11.4 million. That pays for any initiative we would ever want to do for our kids, for our staff, for our payroll. There's challenges that we need to vow at the state level, and that's something that we're currently doing.
Now, we're going to go to the next round, where I'm going to take a question out of the bowl, and we're going to start with Jeff. And Jeff will have one minute to answer the question. Again, these questions were posed by folks online via email to East Greenwich News. I would also remind the candidates that we do have three opportunities to weigh in on questions that are not directly directed to you. So Jeff? In recent years, the district has taken on costly new initiatives, including Chromebooks for all students at the high school, all-day kindergarten, and later school start for high school and middle school students. Meanwhile, enrollment is up as is the cost of educating our children with special needs. Going forward, how do we pay our current bills yet maintain an eye on expenses?
This one, we stay on budgets all night for myself, so, you know, I did put my expertise in. But, look, this goes back to the thing I answered earlier. We've got to plan long-term. We also have to implement things that keep us one of the top districts in the state. I'm a proponent of late start times because the science says it's right. It's best for our kids. Go back to that, what I said from the very beginning, going to do what's best for our kids. So we have to figure out how to pay for this by planning longer term, by creating revenue streams. And people have already said, "I agree, we need a director of curriculum." So it's one more thing we have to add to the list. We're going to have to work through the budget line by line. There are a lot of things we can't cut out. There are a lot of things that are fixed costs. There are small pieces that are not. If we think long-term, we can figure that out. We have to figure out how to use our reserves properly for the short term and the long term. We have to work with the town, help them create revenue streams to help be able to fund the schools so we can support them.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Our challenges are not unique to East Greenwich. There's 66 local education agencies in Rhode Island. A local education agency is a district. These challenges are faced all across the state. There are opportunities for us to collaborate with other districts, share resources, so that we can continue to offer high-quality education programs to our students in an equitable fashion. We can collaborate on things like community service, on things like senior projects. We can collaborate on things like community service, on things like senior projects, and we can bring in partners from outside to allow us the opportunity to offer more for our children. I'll use an example of my sister, who brought her Leadership Rhode Island class to collaborate with the senior center to develop a program for students in our high school that would allow them to fulfill a community service requirement and cost the district nothing.
Thanks, Matt. And so, it is, enrollment in East Greenwich public schools is up about 100 students since 2011, according to the school department. Cole in particular already has more students than was designed to hold. What should the school committee do to ensure the quality of education does not decline?
The school committee must contemplate all available appropriate options for continuing to educate children in the middle school level. That includes sharing resources within the district or outside the district, utilizing additional space that may be available to us, whether it's at Cole, on the school grounds, or within other school buildings within the district, contemplating all recommendations from folks within that middle school community who are on the ground, in the trenches, dealing with those kids. One of the things that where we can improve as a district is engaging all of the stakeholders to make decisions on behalf of our district. We bring in the educators, we bring in the administrators, we bring in the support staff members to collaborate with us on how we should solve it. These issues cannot be resolved in a vacuum by seven people.
The next question is for you. In many respects, East Greenwich High School is very focused on four-year college preparation. Should we expand offerings, including vocational training, for those students who are not looking to attend a four-year college?
Thank you, actually, that's an excellent question, so thank you for it. We are focused on college prep. The goal needs to be that every single student is prepared to make the choice that is right for him or her. So we don't use the phrase vocational anymore, we talk about career and technical education. I have opened up, to one of my previous roles, I opened up something called PTECH, Pathways in Technology, Early Career High School. We did that in Providence, there's one in Westerly, and there's one in Newport. It's a pathway for students to get an associate's degree while they're in high school. It's a six-year degree, this came with funding through the state in collaboration with CCRI, so that students were able to get, in this case, an associate's degree in information technology. They could use that to go on and get a career in IT, first audit a job with a business partner, and then perhaps parlay that into a four-year degree. The important piece here is that no student is going to be able to survive in the 21st century without some sort of post-secondary education, and we have to prepare each one of our children for that.
I'm going to go with Jeff first and then Aaron. Can you weigh in on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, very good. So I just wanted to weigh in because, because I agree, I think we do need to be doing more in terms of career or technical education. We need kids to understand that there are multiple pathways to being successful, and in fact, there are some career technical paths that frankly are going to be a lot more lucrative than maybe get your master's degree. So kids need to see that there are multiple paths, but it's a cultural issue, I think, in our schools as well. We need all kids to feel supported in whatever options they choose. And we do have a culture that is really biased toward a traditional four-year college track. And I don't think that serves our, our, frankly, as well. I think that there are implications for how we do guidance in our, in our high school and really throughout the district. And if you look at the Strategic Plan, the Vision 2020, it talks about a whole of calling our guidance curriculum, so that in every year that our kids are in the school system, they are being supported and helping to make the choices that are right for them. And it's never more important if our kids get to high school and they need that support, they see their guidance counselors when they come in as a ninth grader and practically on their way out when they're going to college, and it's not enough.
We need to provide more opportunities. Trade opportunities are great, there's a lot more opportunities than when I was a kid, and we're sitting in one of them right here in the technology. We should utilize this resource. I've been told it might be a difficult thing to do, and there's certain nuances to how we go about it. Don't accept that we're just saying, you can't do that. We have to figure out a way to work with a local college in town that can provide technical opportunities in a variety of fields for our children.
Oh, wait, my father is a local, he's a retired plumber. He is an unbelievable tradesman. My mom's a respiratory therapist, neither of them graduated from a four-year institution. I think, kind of what Jeff said, if you couple with, you talked to Steve Kitchen, I don't know his exact title up here, but he's one of the decision makers. I think this is a natural place for it to all happen. But I think too often in East Greenwich, it's always, you know, are you going to Yale or are you going to Harvard, and there's so much pressure, and some students are just not, not supposed to go to Yale or Harvard, and they might be just as successful, even more successful, if they're in the trades. So I think it's really imperative that we research this, we try to expand this, and we make a point, and, you know, I love to go to the high school and different things and try to support this. I've seen so many musicians and singers that didn't go to the traditional, I went to decent school music, but I see people that are great singers, and they, they might not even go to a community college, they had a father or a mother that was a voice teacher. So it's very important that we look at this. Thank you.
I serve as general counsel to the Metropolitan Regional Career and Technical Center of Public High School, 9th and 12th in Providence, the Rhode Island Nurses Institute, Middle College Charter High School, and the Academy for Career Exploration. All high schools that offer career and technical education programs to their students, students walk out of those institutions with an industry certificate and with college credit in many instances. In this capacity, I have the opportunity to participate in the redrafting of the career and technical education regulations in Rhode Island. I see districts all over the state offering numerous opportunities to their students to earn industry certifications and college credit. We can do it. Currently, our only CTE program is Aviation Academy. East Greenwich can do better.
Move on to Aaron now. Aaron, your question is, is how? This year, South Kingston implemented a dual-language immersion program for kindergarteners, when students taught half of their day in English and half in Spanish. Other districts are adding Chinese language classes. Should East Greenwich expand its core language offerings if so?
Well, I sing in five different languages. I went to the Middlebury Language School, oh, excuse me, the German Language School in the Middlebury College at Vermont. I actually had the, I was there for two summers in an immersion program, where all you did was speak and write the language and learn, and I also sang in German Lieder, which is just German, so this is, this is German. But I think it's really important to immerse our students and give them the opportunities. Sometimes you can have lunch and you can have a certain language that people speak. I think kindergarten is a great time. You have to have the appropriate resources and teacher, I think it's something to explore. And I think that the language of Chinese is, would be great to have in the school system. I do know it takes a long time to go to learn Mandarin. So I, I guess, perfect example, in seven weeks, I was able to speak like at a 10-year-old level in German. The students that were at Middlebury College, it took them after 11 weeks, their, their language was very minimal. So it takes a long time because it's such a different type of language to teach.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I could weigh in on this. I think the point here is not so much the, the dual language, which is important, we did this in Providence as well, with dual language, we opened at a couple of our schools this past year when I was the CAO. It's about being innovative. It is about figuring out what are the 21st century skills that we want our students to know and be able to do, and think about how we market ourselves as a school district that is doing something new and different. We hold ourselves up in comparison with Barrington quite frequently and other high farming districts in the state. We need to think about what people are doing nationally. So whether it is dual language, and we're thinking about Spanish or Mandarin, whether it is coding from a very young age, whether it is exploring what CTE truly means in our district, but it's about branding ourselves as being innovators for 21st century life.
Stuart, and Stuart, this question is for you. You may have heard this one before. What lessons should be learned from the combined rollout of later school start times and the switch from a three-tier to a two-tier busing system, which caused long bus rides for many younger students, lost school time, headaches for parents, and could require additional money in next year's budget?
Well, that hits home. So I've been asked to take the lead of the newly formed Transportation Subcommittee, which has essentially been charged to determine whether or not we can continue with the two-tier system moving into next year with a budget-neutral situation. At the present time, later start time with the alignment of the school district has cost us an additional $74,000 above and beyond those budgeted. We have been given three additional buses. If we were to pay for those next year, that's an additional $224,000. So all in, the later start time, full-day K, alignment of the, $386,000. So we've been working with Ocean State Transportation, and we gave them a, we asked them to do a clean slate, rework the route, see if we can, if it really can work with parameters that we're comfortable with for our students, whether it be a 25-minute bus ride, 30, 35-minute bus ride. We haven't vetted it completely, but it looks to be that the two-tiered system will not work unless we, and it definitely won't work without the additional four buses, unless we're looking at an hour-long bus ride, hour-and-20-minute long bus ride. What we'll be doing moving forward is figuring out a way to go back to the three-tiered system, but keeping the later start time in place. There's work to be done. We have a great group of people on the Transportation Subcommittee, we have a fantastic school committee, and we'll, we'll figure it out with the help of parents that have been providing input and giving suggestions. A lot of work to be done.
So I would absolutely like to weigh in on this, and if I go over time, I'd like to keep my third opportunity to weigh in, so that I have time to really properly attest this. So there were two major goals associated with changing start times this year. First, we're wanting the elementary schools to allow for more inter-school collaboration around teaching and learning. That's really what caused the biggest problems with collapsing of those two tiers. The second goal, obviously, pushing back start times to support the academic, physical, and mental well-being of our older students. We implemented this plan in the same year as we implemented full-day kindergarten because we were able to realize a cost savings of $127,000 by collapsing the midday kindergarten runs. Therefore, we were able to put together a plan that would require only a marginal increase of $89,000 to both align the schools and to push back the start times. We worked very closely with the bus company to try to create an effective busing program to support its initiatives. In addition to the bus company signing off on the plan, we had a plan drafted by a third-party consultant who validated the plan. As we all know, busing was extremely problematic at the beginning of this quarter, and folks have worked tirelessly to remedy the situation, which has now vastly improved from where it started. Moving forward, of course, we have to reassess the start time initiative and the school alignment initiative. I'm not prepared to incur any additional costs next year that we had planned to do this year, but I do believe that there is a way to move forward that would still allow for better alignment across the elementary schools and later start times for middle and high school students and shorter bus rides for our students. I think we can handle that.
I'm going to echo something that Carolyn said. As a member of the Finance Committee, I have a feeling that we've evolved this regardless of how this all works out, so we need to definitely look at the data and reevaluate how we go about this and what's going to happen going forward. We shouldn't give up the late start times if we do have to realign how we do the elementary schools and go back to the three-tier system. That makes a lot of sense, but we'll have to figure out how to do it the right way. I would be a proponent of potentially looking at even the younger schools grouped together and the older elementary schools grouped together, because you at least get some of that common play in that. I think ultimately, what we need to do is when we execute these plans, we really need the financial and operational experience to make these things happen. I've run businesses, I've opened businesses, I've closed businesses, and I've done it for people across the country, and that kind of experience is really helpful when you're rolling up multiple strategies. So we've got to have that in mind as we think through these things ahead of time. And it's no fault of anybody's up here, it's just a matter of experience issue. I think we're going to get it right.
Thanks, Jeff. Last question, and this round goes to Carolyn. And it is, and we touched on this earlier, you may want to go into a little bit more detail. East Greenwich is one of only three districts in Rhode Island with enrollment greater than 2,000 students that doesn't have a full-time curriculum yet, or a superintendent. The school committee has said we would like to hire such a person. How could the district find the money to set the hire?
Well, I did, I did take the opportunity to address this earlier, and as I said, and it's consistent with what's in our strategic plan, I do think it is the next major priority for this. And it is going to be a struggle to find the resources, particularly because of our increased enrollments. That's why, even if we consider going back to the three-tier system, we can't even necessarily think about rolling back the costs that we invested in the two-tier system this year because we may need that additional busing to be able to handle the students that we have. So we are going to have to try to find the money someplace else. Where's it going to come from? As Stuart said, we do run a very lean budget, there's always opportunities to find efficiency, but it's on the margins because, as Matt said, 80% of our budget is already tied up in salaries. I think that one of the things that the Finance Committee often be thinking about doing moving forward is a thorough program assessment of everything that we're doing. I think that the programs we're running, we're running efficiently, but we have a well-known program in the district. How many students are utilizing them and how cost-effective are they? Are we getting the bank card up, are the resources coming from there?
So I'll weigh in because curriculum oversight has been the bulk of my work over the past several years, and I'm now consultant to schools and districts around just this work. The way that, there are innovative ways that we can afford this position. It is about a $150,000 a year job, that salary plus fringe. It may be that we find the best route is to just put that position into the org chart, but more importantly, we need to look at the job that everyone does, the role that everyone has, the responsibilities that everyone is supposed to do under their job, and see if there's any room for restructuring. It may be, and what we have to do is put the needs of kids first over the need of any role or title. And so as we look at the administrative team, it may turn out that we are too lean, but what I'd like to see us do is an audit of everyone's roles and responsibilities. There are people out there who have experience and expertise in both special education and curriculum development. There are superintendents who are very strong instructional leaders, and I know Dr. Mercurio has a background in instruction. And so there are ways that we can think about the people that we have there or reframing our organizational charts to make this work.
Great, thank you.
I think everybody's seen it, every one of us wants a curriculum director, which tells me that we have to figure out a way to get it done, and we as a town and as a community have to decide what value and figure out how we can find a way to make that happen. Here's why it's important. We need a curriculum director because we need a good path for general education and to follow the standards set forward by the state, to make sure we're doing the right things and we're enhancing the education for all students. We also then need to make sure we're setting the proper course for the special education programs. And by separating the two and making sure that we're aligning all the needs in both sections is extremely important, and it's something that we're missing in the district, and we have to figure out a way to get it done. It's not, not going to become a choice, it's going to certainly.
So that concludes this round, and so now we're going to go to the next round, which will be led up by Matt, and in this round, these are the candidates will offer a 20-second summary. What do you, Matt? Go ahead.
Sorry, David, can you say summary?
This is it.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and thank you for our hosts for putting this together. We're so happy to have such an involved community. The responsibilities of the school committee require a detailed The responsibilities of this school committee require a detailed understanding of public school governance and operations, as well as an intimate understanding of our community. I've been training for this job since I first walked through the doors of Middlebury for a kindergarten with that guy in 1981. I attended these schools, I've been a teacher, I have a law practice that focuses on schools, I've defended schools in lawsuits, I've drafted state laws and regulations, I've authored numerous articles on school law and policy. I'm raising my children in this district, and I've been connected to this community my entire life. This community has been great to me, and I have a visceral need to give back to them. Giving my background, training, and experiences serving on the school committee is the best way I know how. I'm honored to hold this post, and I'm privileged to be included with these candidates. Regardless of the outcome of this election, with anyone sitting up here, you will be well-served. We're extremely fortunate. I thank these guys for stepping up, for offering their time, their energy, and their talents to our community. I thank all of you for coming and allowing me to engage in this process. Thanks for your interest in our schools and the betterment of our community.
So again, thank you all for coming out and taking the time to hear from all of us tonight. I want to thank you all for listening to what we've all said. It's very clear that, as Matt said, we are all deeply passionate about education and deeply passionate about our kids. Like Matt, this is a job that I've been training for, I think, my entire life as well. I went into education at 22, I taught, I've been a building leader, I've been a district leader, I have been and am now, again, a consultant, and I have deep research into best practices, not just in this country, but across the globe. We need to be innovative, and we can be a superb school district. But that means knowing best practices, knowing innovation, understanding clarity about who we are, what we want to be, what we want all of our students to know and be able to do, how we will know that they've learned that, what we will do when they struggle, and what we will do when they're successful. I have worked with districts across the state and outside of this state that have done innovative practices. We talked about dual language. I built two high, a high school at Blackstone Valley Prep and guided the development of two new high schools in Providence. Those were standards-based high schools, which directly aligns to our strategic plan. Think everywhere that we are going in our strategic plan over the next five years relies on people on this committee having expertise and knowledge about best practice. I bring that to you, but more importantly, I bring to you the love that I have for my own children, the love I have for this town, and the love I have for education.
Some of my fondest memories, getting up early and playing in the jazz band with Vincent Matera, playing football for Art Hurst Shaw, being scolded by Mrs. Hartley in second grade. I just love this town, I love the school system. I'm running because I want my daughters to be proud of me and know that you need to get from the arena, and I'm constantly just kind of slaying arrows at people. I think I'm just honored to be in front of everyone here and with this group, and I would appreciate your vote on November 8th. Thank you very much.
When I volunteered to fill the vacant seat in March for an eight-month window, someone had warned me the time that it would take to be a part of this group, it's a lot of work. I feel like I have a skill set that adds value to this committee, I think my counterparts would agree with that. I've been asked to fix problems that were created prior to me getting here, I've only been here for eight months. I'm going to continue to work as hard as I possibly can to fix the issues that we have, but also be a leader in the district. I'm short and sweet, I appreciate your vote, I think I'm doing a good job, and I'll continue to do so.
Carol?
Well, I am sitting here in such deep appreciation for the people that I'm sitting up there with. I think this town is incredibly lucky that we have so many people, quality people willing to give their time and talents. And I agree with Matt, this town will be well-served, however, when the election turns out. We talked a lot about some of our challenges as a school district, and I have to say that I can feel people can disagree about what the best way forward is. I don't pretend to have all these. What I do bring to the table is a commitment to finding balance, developing consensus, and fostering the kind of community engagement that can help us create the town that we want to have for our families. During my opening statement, I laid out our school district's five strategic priorities, and within each of those, I just want to reiterate some of the very specific things that I think we need to do. We need to hire a director of teaching and learning, we talked about that. We need to identify students with achievement gaps and advance our strategies for closing those gaps, while at the same time addressing the needs of our highest achievers. All kids are special needs. We need to get and keep great staff, which would do by providing competitive salaries, a positive school climate, and great professional development opportunities. We need wellness policies and practices that will maximize learning and minimize stress. And we need to further develop our performance metrics, both in terms of academic achievement and operational efficiency. I'm running for a second term because the schools have been great for my kids, and I want to help to ensure that we are among the best of the best when it comes to serving the academic, physical, social, and emotional needs of all kids. I would be honored to continue to serve on school committee and would be grateful for your support on November 8th.
Thank you again for everybody for coming out tonight, for the organization for putting this together. I also want to go back to the town that I grew up in, that I loved and I still love when we came back there with our children. I think you've seen that message about tonight, I think more than half the candidates from both offices grew up in this town. As I've mentioned, I have the financial and operational experience to make sure we put forth the strategies that we need to for the schools. I've got the knowledge to do this, and I've done it for my entire life. I'm a practical, common-sense problem solver, and that's what we need, we need to think through things and working together, we need to use common sense in doing so and do what's best for our kids. I also want to make sure that we are getting to yes when we solve problems. We do too much across the town, across all the committees of saying, we can't do this, I'm not sure if we can do this. We have to figure out how to do this, how are we going to get together, work together, and do the right thing by our kids. I hope that I can have your vote on November 8th, and I thank you all.
That's the form for tonight. I want to thank all the candidates, I want to thank everybody for coming.